Here. So obviously, we appreciate the chance to come down here and do a little training for you guys before the meeting. So all's request, what we've tried to do here is provide a presentation that kind of goes over the plan review process that you all have in place. I just kind of look at each step as we go through that process and what are the elements that are part of each step and part of each of those steps and kind of what's the role of staff, what's the role of planning commission and well as the B O C if they're required in any particular type of project. So really, kind of the it'll be kind of in four, uh, four parts here in terms of the training. And so this is kind of where we're going to first of all, we'll do a little background on this to begin with. So we'll do kind of a look at planning and planning and zoning. We'll begin kind of what's how are they similar, how are they different? Uh, and then after that, we'll, uh, we'll move on to how can we plan and zone? So this is just looking at legal basis for planning and zoning, how we can do what we do. And then next we'll do, uh, look at the five primary documents that you all as a city has adopted that provides the regulations or one, the plan, uh, to direct all planning and zoning, but also to the regulatory documents that you all have adopted, uh, just for regulating and reviewing and approving, uh, development here in the city. And then the final part is obviously the most, the main part that we're going to look at, and that's the say, the Fairview project review process or the development review process. And so we'll go through each of those steps and look a little bit more in depth on those. So these first few is really just kind of a background and to kind of get us into it. So we will start with planning versus zoning. And usually what I do, and we won't necessarily have to do this tonight, but, uh, it's usually what I do is go around the room, ask people if they're willing to answer the question, what is planning? And my point in doing that is usually if we asked everybody in here, we would probably all get a little bit different definition of what planning is. Now they would all probably be related. They would be focused on different things. But the idea is just looking at what is planning, how do people define planning? So in this regard, and these are just three examples that I found online. So they kind of get progressively detailed, more detailed as you get to the right. The first one is probably the most basic definition of planning. Control, uh, construction and growth, uh, within a community. The second one gets a little bit closer, a little bit more in depth or a little bit different perspective and talks about it's a problem solving, it's a process, making informed decisions. So it's looking a little bit more to the process and in being informed of decisions that you need to make in this process. Then finally, you know, adds in a little bit more, uh, you know, talks about it's a technical process and it's a political process. So again, these are just ways to look at what is planning. And so obviously we can look at it, it's going to be control, but it's really looking at a process that communities have in place to review what the reason I say that is most of the time planning, the word planning and zoning can many times be interchangeable or is they are interchanged, but they're not necessarily the same thing. And I kind of always, I always like to start out with this and get an understanding of what they are, how they're different, how they complement one another. So started with planning, so then we'll go to, uh, so what is zoning? So again, just three more definitions that, you know, pretty good, a good description of zoning. And to get a little more detail or a little different perspective as you, as you go across the screen. I think the first one again is usually probably what most people think zoning is going to look at your community, it's going to be across the entire community. About every property or every part of your community by property level by a particular zone. Again, this is nothing that you all don't interact with, that you don't understand, but usually that's the way, probably the most general idea and general definition of zoning. So the second one talks about zoning as a tool. So it looks more than just, hey, we're going to zone something, but it looks at this is a tool to create something. It's a tool to get to an end, whatever that end may be. Uh, and then the final, it talks about the process. So again, we're getting back to the idea of this is a process. Zoning is a tool, but it's also a process. It's not simply, okay, we've got property and every property in the city has a zone on it. It's much deeper to that. There's much more detail to that. Again, planning and zoning, looking at the different definitions. And then ultimately what I want to get to is, you know, what is the difference between the two? So I'm a visual learner and I like how to use things to illustrate. And so this is how I think about planning and zoning and essentially how they're different, but also how they complement one another. So if you think about planning and you look at a paint by numbers, a plan or a planning aspect of things is really kind of the squiggly lines. The squiggly lines are there to eventually give you a vision what the final product will be on a paint by numbers. But inside of the squiggly lines, you're going to have numbers and those numbers tell you exactly what paint to put where so that you will eventually get to your final completed So the way to look at this and the way I look at this is planning is the squiggly lines, the numbers are the zoning and it's your regulations. So your plan for your community and you all, it's case, the 2040 plan has created a vision. You all have a vision for your community here in Fairview. And your zoning ordinance and the other ordinance documents we'll look at here in a minute, those are like the numbers inside the squiggly lines. Those are the tools and the mechanisms that will bring about your vision for your community. So again, I'm a visual learner, so I just like this as an illustration of planning and zoning is not exactly the same, but they are complementary. And zoning helps you match or create and get to the end of the vision, whatever your plan has for your community. Try to start off a little bit of that. So yeah, I don't want to get too much into the legal part of things, but at least wanted everybody to see. So how can we plan? So we can look at planning, we can look at zoning, but obviously we need to be able to legally do what we do. Obviously, we know we, we can do this. But the idea here is just to look at the actual text or the ideas of how we can plan. So there's really three powers that a community has that allows them to do planning, zoning and review of development. So we have corporate power, again, able to levy taxes, fees, things of that nature, put those towards, uh, facilities, utilities, uh, different aspects of the community. Probably, probably the primary, uh, way that we are able to plan uh, and probably what we'll look at specifically is, uh, your police power. And so this is a power that's reserved to the states by U S constitution. And then the states then provide that to cities and counties that they can be able to regulate through zoning and regulate in other way, other capacities as well. And so kind of the state enabling legislation on the right hand side of the screen is really just the Tennessee version of what the police power is. This is the state of Tennessee giving cities and counties the ability to have a planning commission, the ability to have a zoning ordinance and the ability to regulate property, private property. So this is, this is kind of look at the ways in which a community can legally view and actually set up planning commission and design review for, uh, your zoning regulations. So we're not going to read all of this, but, uh, just want you all to see state enabling legislation here in Tennessee. This is the actual text, uh, within Tennessee code annotated that gives the right for you all to, uh, establish a planning commission. As they may create a, establish a, missable planning commission. So obviously a community isn't required to have a planning commission, but this does give a community the ability to do so if they so choose. Now beyond just given the ability to set up a planning commission, this is the text specifically that is the grant of power from T C A that allows communities to actually set up and create your actual zoning ordinance. And this directs, in terms of this directs and gives parameters to actually what you can regulate in terms of your, your zoning ordinance. So I underline and bolded this one section and just to give you an idea of how broad and really general, uh, the state law is, and which therefore gives you all a lot of latitude in terms of what can be regulated. And so regulate location, height, bulk regulations, number of stories or the size of buildings, size of yards, courts, open spaces, density. Obviously, these are all things that we all regulate through your zoning ordinance. So again, this is just the actual text from state law that allows you to be able to do those things and gives directions to uh, and also put some limitations on what you all can review. The next is that we're just going to talk a little bit about the Fairview, the documents you all have in place. So these are the five really primary documents that you all have adopted as a city, uh, to regulate development as it comes in. Again, I don't think this is really a surprise for anybody in the room, but just to look at them and, and understand a little bit about each one of them. I wanted to, I wanted to touch on each one of them a little bit. So kind of going back to the idea of the paint by numbers and the squiggly lines, that being your vision for your community. That's really your fair, uh, February for 2040 plan. So that's your plan document that has created a vision for your community. And then it goes forward, it goes to the right and you get your zoning ordinance subdivision regulations, your design review manual, and then your stormwater management ordinance. Now, obviously the forward to the right are your actual regulatory documents. So those are kind of the numbers inside those quickly lines. Those are the documents and regulations that will help bring about the vision for your community here. The first one we'll talk about is the 2040 plan. What is it? What does it do? So I think you all probably understand this a little bit. Uh, you were part of the process. But it's intended to guide city decisions. Uh, the key here is that your 2040 plan is not a regulatory document. You actually don't zone from your 2040 plan. Uh, there's really no regulations within that plan. It's a more of a policy plan. It sets policy for your community. It sets policy and direction for decisions you all make. But it doesn't actually provide the regulatory or regulations within it that actually you would reference in terms of how would, how a particular development will be designed or laid out. So again, your 2040 plan sets that vision, sets those policies in place that will guide you all on your decisions, but it won't necessarily regulate specifics of a development itself. So you see it under applicability. This was a quote taken from the 2040 plan and, and you know, right there in the beginning, underlines this make recommendations. Uh, obviously looks at transportation, future land use, uh, your community facilities. And so again, this is a document that will make recommendations in terms of future land use. That's probably the one that you all most commonly see. Have a development come in, they desire to do a certain type of development and location. Staff, we're going to look at that. We're going to say, hey, 2040 plan says it's this classification for future land use. Within that, there are appropriate zoning districts, there are appropriate, uh, land uses. So we're going to make recommendations to you all based on seeing that. You all will be able to look at that and see, does this meet appropriate zoning districts? Does it meet the appropriate? And making those recommendations, but necessarily not necessarily regulating from the document. Obviously, we're going to, we're going to review, we're going to reference this document, uh, when we review projects. Obviously, it's available to you all as well. When you review projects. Might look at is, uh, the future transportation plan in there, the major thoroughfare plan. Are there particular road projects that are, that are proposed for the future? Transportation when a new project comes in, something that we need to be on the front end, be able to tell a developer when they first come in, hey, this is a project that we see coming in the future. Uh, this is going to require widening of the road or this is going to require an extension or whatever it may be. So this document also provides that type of information, uh, for staff to be able to interact with developers in the front end when we start having discussions with about projects and potential transportation impacts. Either new projects or just general transportation impacts on a, on a project that may come forward. Uh, so the next document is zoning ordinance. And this is the specific regulations in terms of each property in your city has a particular zone on it. Each zone has its own specific regulations, uh, whether that be lot size, lot width, setbacks, yard lines, uh, lot coverage, all of this, uh, that are, that's in the zoning ordinance. So that's the, this is obviously the most, uh, probably well-known document you all would have. Most people in the community would understand you have zoning ordinance and what it does. Not going to spend a lot of time, obviously you all interact with this on, on a monthly basis. Uh, next we have subdivision regulations. So subdivision regulations again are requirements and regulations. Uh, however, it's different than zoning ordinance. You're getting more technical. This is specific to subdivision process. Uh, that doesn't necessarily mean a residential subdivision, but subdivision of any property within the community. So it's going to establish that process. If someone has property and they want something about it for commercial uses, it's still going to have to follow the established process for subdivision of, of property, which is found within subdivision regulations. Under applicability right there has a quote from your sub regs applies to all subdivisions located within corporate boundaries of Fairview Tennessee. So it doesn't necessarily have to be residential in use and also be commercial in use as well or industrial. Uh, obviously in subdivision regulations, there's a lot of other information in there as well, technical information. About block length, cul-de-sac length, you're going to have information about, uh, utilities, information about stormwater. You're going to have information about a lot of the technical aspects of the actual development and the design of the development, which will go deeper than just the regulations of zoning ordinance itself. So again, really think about it as, is your plan is very broad, your zoning ordinance is very specific to the property. And then your subdivision regulations are going to be specific as well. And as we go through these documents, they get a little bit more specific and they get a little more focused on what their topic is. So that, that's one way to think of, think about these as you go through them. They all coordinate together, but they all have a very specific focus on what they regulate and what they look at. The next we have the design review manual. Again, we can look at this, obviously gets a little more specific. Now we're looking at the site. We're looking at existing trees, we're looking at landscaping, we're looking at buffering, screening of, of structures. Uh, we're also looking at landscaping in the parking area, looking at signage, also and obviously the architectural design of the building. So we can see now we've, we've, we've got the property zone. Now we've gone through subdivision process potentially. Now we're looking at actual specific site elements, site design. Uh, so again, this is the document for that. This is, this is going to be applied to any development that requires a site plan. This is found in design review manual one dash one oh one point four. Under administration, you can see on the screen, uh, when staff will reference this. And it says, quote, development requiring site plan approval by planning commission. That's, and that's only one at sixteen one oh four seventeen one oh three. And it's referenced in both documents, sub regs and, uh, or sorry, designer view manual and zoning ordinance. So staff's going to have to use this and, and reference this when any type of, uh, development comes in, uh, for these purposes. Final one we have is our stormwater management ordinance. There we go. So the purpose of stormwater management ordinance, uh, is manage the quality of stormwater runoff from sewer system, storm sewer systems. Make sure you're compliant with all your requirements, uh, M S four requirements. Best way to look at it is it says administered jointly by, uh, your engineering department, planning and codes and public works. So really to look at is polar works is going to maintain your system, your infrastructure. Uh, engineering is going to issue the permits or work in the right of way, issue permits for land disturbance. It's going to include grading permits, site utilization, erosion control. Uh, and then planning and codes is going to coordinate the plan review of the new developments. So this is kind of a easy way to look at how each three departments or the three department, individual departments will utilize the stormwater management ordinance and how they coordinate to manage the stormwater program here in, in the city. And I don't want to spend a lot of time on these. I know you all see these and interact with them a good bit. But I want to have an overview, a list to understand these are your five primary documents that staff's going to use, you all would reference. Uh, obviously there may be other things that staff will review. Uh, we're going to look at uh, any type of floodplain maps. We will look at urban growth boundary maps. We will look at your zoning map. So there's other, other documents or maps that we would reference in terms of staff usage and you all as well. Uh, that may not be included within these particular documents, but again, these are the primary ones that we just want to kind of go over a little bit before we get into this. So the idea behind, uh, looking at the project review process was, um, first looking at the idea of how many steps will there be? And so, um, I didn't go too detailed on this, uh, but just an overview. You're looking at about seven primary steps that you're going to have in what is really the most intensive review process that you all have. And so obviously you have different review processes for non-residential development. Uh, residential developments that would be more of a base zone and not go for an overlay district. Those processes would be a little shorter, uh, but the purpose, for the purpose of the training tonight, we just wanted to look at what would be the most intensive one. So we're going to presume that someone will come in and they want to come in with a plan to overlay district. Put a piece of property and they want to do residential development and they want to be through the plan overlay district. And so that's kind of the basis of what we, we thought we would go through tonight. What's the most intensive, what would have the most steps? So first of all, you look at, you know, essentially there's seven steps or seven components of a plan review process. And we'll go through a little bit more detail on each one of these. Uh, that's correct. Yeah. Other communities, uh, S P is a, uh, well, I shouldn't say a little different. Depends on the community you're in, in terms of an S P. Some communities S P is almost like you just come show us what you want to do. Uh, there's almost no regulation to it at all. Other communities, there's minimal regulation of what an S P is and P U Ds normally have a lot more, uh, stringent kind of step-by-step process and what are the requirements, much more similar to to what we all here as a pod. And so I would say what you all have here as a pod would be very comparable to a P U D. And other communities, uh, S Ps just really depend on the community. Some are just come tell us what you want to do and we'll just kind of talk about it, which seems really scary to me. And you also have master plan zones, which, uh, some communities have what are called master plan zones, which are also very close to what you all here as a pod as well. Again, it's terminology, different communities use different terminology. So but yes, they'd be, be similar to what you would have in those other communities. So kind of the first step we would have here is just the initial meeting. So this is, there's a property owner, developer, uh, and the property owner together has discussed and there's an interest in developing residentially in Fairview. Uh, they have a piece of property, they have a general idea of what they want to do. And so they're going to call up Ethan and they'll say, Ethan, hey, we want to come talk to you about a this piece of property. We want to talk about this development that we have an interest in doing. And so this is really your first step that is going to occur in this process. And this is really just an opportunity for them to come in, meet with Ethan, Ethan, meet with them, understand what they're desiring to do, but also for Ethan to be able to set expectations and give them direction and understanding on what are the general parameters and general requirements the city has for this particular piece of property. First, the first question, first thing you need to establish is, is it even in the city limits? If it's not the city limits, obviously it's going to have to go through annexation process. Going to have to go through the annexation process or not. Uh, then there'll be obviously a discussion of what zoning is on the property currently or what would they want to zone it if they're annexing in? Going through the rezoning process. Those are important, obviously, to understand. To be able to, if it's not in the city, you want to annex it, then we have to determine that it's actually in the urban growth boundary. If it's not, then it's not possible to annex in. We need to establish that to begin with in this meeting. Ethan's going to look at, uh, what they wanted to zone it to. He's going to reference the 2040 plan. Uh, this property has, uh, been deemed whatever the classification is, future land use classification, this. Clearly indicate that and provide that to the developer or property owner. Say, hey, these are the types of developments that are really appropriate on this property. These are the zoning districts that are appropriate on this property. So again, Ethan's been able to set expectation and be able to guide them from the very beginning on what this development really should be in this location within Fairview based on, uh, really at this point in time, be really based on the 2040 plan. And then maybe a little bit into your zoning ordinance in terms of what would be appropriate zoning for that particular property. Who, and there's not a whole lot to this initial meeting in terms of depth, in terms of there's no plan to really show. Uh, obviously you all planning commission and the board of commissioners are not part of this. This is just this initial step, initial contact with the city. So after this meeting, Ethan's going to give them a next steps. What's your next steps? We're going to presume for tonight, obviously they're outside city limits. And Ethan's determined that this project property is in the urban growth boundary and contiguous to the existing city, uh, limits. And so this is a property that could potentially be annexed. So the next step would be, uh, the developer and or owner applicant, whomever is going to be. They're going to come in and they're going to, uh, submit for, uh, the annexation of the property into this is really the first, uh, step of the process where anybody outside staff will be involved. At this point in time, annexation is going to come to staff. It will also come to you all planning commission and then board of commissioners as well. Again, this has already been done at the initial meeting, but verifying that it's within urban growth boundary, allowing it to be annexed in. Staff is going to create a plan of services. How is the city going to be able to serve this property when it comes in? Cover fire, police, trash, uh, utilities, school. Anything's done to, you know, even zoning and planning services. So how is the city going to be able to serve, uh, this property if it's annexed in? Staff is going to create that staff report. They're going to create those planned services, uh, documents. They're going to provide those to you all, come in with a, uh, staff report. They're going to provide, uh, direction in terms of a recommendation for you all. That can be based on what's the 2040 plan. This is appropriate to have residential in this area. This idea behind having a residential development area matches up with, uh, the 2040 plan in this regard. Now, obviously no one, uh, they're not required to come in with any type of plan for the annexation request. They don't have to realities, you'll at least kind of know what they want to do there. So you can have an idea type of development that's coming in. So this will obviously would come to you all, planning services. And your role in this is obviously, and you, y'all know this, you've, you've done this plenty of times. Your role in this is to review, review this information. Determine if you all feel like this is an appropriate action for the city to annex this property. Just because someone comes before you and requests annexation, there is no mandate that you actually bring it in. You can make the decision or make a recommendation against the annexation. You may be able to look at it and deem it as like the city can service this. We don't feel like the city can serve this utilities. We don't feel like we have enough police, fire, M S to service this property, whatever the situation may be. This is an opportunity for you all to be able to look at that and determine if you can make, meet services is the idea of what they're wanting to do there. Appropriate, does it match the 2040? All this information for you all coming together and making a recommendation to the board of commissioners. Uh, your recommendation is going to be one of two things. It's going to be affirmative or for it or negative against. So you all have really two choices. You can make a positive or negative recommendation to the board of, uh, board of commissioners. Uh, once the board of commissioners gets this, this information, uh, they'll have a final decision on annexations. And take your recommendation into consideration, but they're not bound to match your recommendation. Or they can make their own decision. But we feel like it should be annexed or they can say, we feel like it shouldn't be annexed. There since they're the legislative body of city of Fairview. Obviously, we, you all know this, but two readings in a public hearing for board, board of commissioners. Annexation law has changed a number of years ago. Things are a little different. It is now done by resolution, not ordinance. It has to be done by owner consent. Um, can't just go out got hired, they just finished a seven and a half square mile annexation. Favor of it, they just annex seven and a half. That is out the window. That's been out the window for years now. That's not possible. And in terms of the process would be by resolution and not by which is a little wonky because for communities that bring an annexation and rezoning at the same time, and rezoning is by ordinance and annexation is by kind of end up being on two different paths there. Uh, owner consent, you can do a referendum, but, um, I don't know if anybody that's actually done that yet. I don't know if anybody want to do that. I don't know. There's unfortunately, there's not a lot of detail in state law far as what is required to hold that referendum. Who gets the ability to vote? I mean, it has, I think it has general wording, I people in the general area of the property. Well, what does that mean? Is that a hundred feet? Is that 500 feet? Is that half a mile? There's really no clear indication of general area. Who gets to vote in that referendum? Is it just the property owner who wants it or is it just the property owner and adjacent properties? You know, there's really no clear indication of that in state law. So I don't know of any communities that have done and I don't, again, there's not a clear process on exactly how you would do that. Uh, I just know it's very different than it used to be and very different now. M T A S, I'm sure you all heard of M T A S. They've, they actually have a kind of what they call their best practices for annexation. Uh, and they have created this 26 step process that is a best practices to follow state law now. It's not mandated. Uh, you don't have to follow their exact process, but, uh, it is very different than previous years for sure. Steps and really there's probably only two steps that involve you all in the board of commissioners. And so, uh, maybe three steps. You know, that actually recommends that the initial, uh, annexation request goes to board of commissioners first. And for them to actually say, yes, they want the planning commission to study the annexation and give a recommendation or they don't. So M T A S's recommendation or their best practices actually says you should take the B O C first. Let them actually make the decision, should this even go forward or not? And if they so choose, they say, yes, we want planning commission to study this and provide us a recommendation. Then it would go to you all. You would make a recommendation, then we'd go back to B O C. So again, that's not mandated by state law, but that is what M T A S states as they feel is best practices based on what current law is now or the updated annexation laws. So again, that's, that's not recommendation, uh, not mandated. Uh, it's just their statement of, hey, we think this is Yeah. So, uh, now you can actually do non-contiguous. In the past, it really wasn't anything you could do. Uh, you would see a lot of communities where you would just annex the right of way and then get out to just the property you wanted to get to. Uh, so a community would go annex this whole long right of way, but no adjacent properties, just to get most of them are commercial industrial property to be able to get the taxes off of that. So now, uh, you are permitted by state law to be able to annex non-contiguous properties. So property does not have to be contiguous to your current city limits. No minimum or maximum distances that I know of. Do you know, Will? I don't think there is. Yeah. Most of this urban, that's, that's kind of the, that's kind of the overarching thing is in your urban growth boundary, then it's essentially up for annexation. Obviously that brings up a lot of questions. Just last month, who owns the road? Who maintains the road? Well, is the city now going to be required to take over maintenance of that road? Is this going to be bringing, it may be fine, we may be able to serve. Is this gonna be bringing, it may be fine, we may be able to serve that property X feet away, or half a mile away, or a mile away. But now is the city also going to incur additional maintenance issue or cost because of now we're gonna have to maintain this road? Not because we're annexing the road, but just because now the county's gonna say, gotta maintain this road. So it is possible, but obviously with every annexation, you really need to be able to look at, is it beneficial for the city to do so? Outside of just generally, like, hey, this property looks good, we can serve this property. But being non-contiguous, you know, response times, who's gonna respond? That can always be an issue. Who's gonna respond in an emergency? Understanding how, what that's gonna be, understanding maintenance of the road. I mean, there's just a lot of things that can come into play with doing non-contiguous annexation. Again, if you so choose to do it, and you can now legally, but through state law, but maybe not the best idea. Maybe not the best idea. Just because there's so many variables that you're not sure about that can come up, that can pop up by having something that you're gonna have to serve that's not contiguous to your current. Maybe utilities, maybe it is connected to the same utility, maybe it's not. It's possible, but maybe not the best practice to. We're gonna presume that, in this case, we're gonna presume that BOC, we'll say you all recommend approval of the annexation. BOC, excuse me, BOC also concurs with you all's recommendation, and the BOC is going to approve this annexation into the city. These are just a few, few points here. Obviously, the BOC, they can deny or, they can approve or deny the annexation. Obviously, they can defer for any amount of time. You all can defer as many, for amount of time that you all see fit, if you need additional information to make your decision. If you feel like you do not have enough information to make the decision, you're more than, more than in the right to be able to defer, to be able to gain that information, direct staff or direct applicant to be able to get that information to you. Because obviously, you wanna make, you all wanna make the informed decision, but ultimately, your applicant wants you to make the informed decision as well. Because if you don't have all the information, and you don't make a decision that is appropriate and correct, then that may have been, may not benefit them either. It may, it's mutual benefit for everybody to have all the information necessary. So you all can defer for a reasonable amount of time to get the information you need. BOC can do the same. And once it's approved, then obviously now they can come in with their rezoning request. I don't know if I did this very well in this section or not, because there's essentially two different types of rezonings we can have here. And so, a little bit going into the planned overlay district, so. As soon as I say, really, an owner and applicant has two options here when it comes into city of Fairview in terms of a rezoning. So they can go for just a base zone. These are your zones that are established in section 5101 of the zoning ordinance. Or they can come in and request a planned overlay district, and that's specific in article 10 of the zoning ordinance. So when someone comes in and they say, well, I wanna rezone property here, these are their, their options they have. So in, in 5101, there's 23 different base zones, residential, commercial, and industrial, that someone can choose from in terms of how they want to rezone their property. If they go with a base zone, it, this is just a standard rezoning submittal for that. It does not require master development plan, and technically, no information required for the actual design or layout of the project as well. If that comes in, then it's gonna go through the same process of annexation. It will come to you all for recommendation, and then it will move on to the BOC for their final approval. The other option that, that you all, you all have here, and that this is kinda what we're going through in this scenario, is the overlay zone district. And this is the other option that an individual has to request here in the city of Fairview. If someone chooses to do the planned overlay district, they will do their submission requesting rezoning, but in this case, it's gonna require them to create a master development plan. I didn't actually do a separate slide for master development plan, because I figure we're just gonna kinda talk about this, because it's so part of the rezoning. It is a required part of the rezoning. So it's not really a separate step, it's just part of the rezoning step here. So this master development plan, as far as the requirements, they're, they're outlined in section 10 of zoning ordinance. And so again, it's gonna have the same similar review process when it comes to any annexation or just a base zone rezoning. It's gonna come to you all for review, recommendation, and then to the BOC for final review and approval. If I did the. So I think, this is kinda where I wanted to talk a little bit more about this. So master plan is really probably the most important step for you all in terms of establishing what that development will look like. This, the master development plan is essentially, the way I think about it, is essentially setting by quote zoning, zoning ordinance just for this development. This is establishing the specific zoning parameters and design and regulation parameters for this particular development. So when it comes to you all, it comes to staff, it comes to BOC, now this is really the foundational part of creating what this development's gonna look like in the end. So for you all, this is really the time to be looking at, you know, what are they looking at in terms of lot sizes? You know, look at densities, look at layout, look at road networks. Because this is, this is establishing, like I said, essentially a zoning ordinance, and the zoning regulations are very specific to this development and this property. And for you all, you know, this is the point in time to do that. Because once this is approved and established, and approved by the BOC, then this really doesn't have to change. This is not required to change unless the owner developer decides to come in and modify the project. That's when your master development plan would change. Once it's approved and it's established, there's really, for the most part, doesn't have, it doesn't have to change. It may never change at that point in time, unless they're, they voluntarily choose to make changes to that master development plan. So that's why it's so important for staff and for you all in the BOC to really focus on this step of the process. Because this, once this gets established, everything is gonna fall under this and needs to match this. And so if it doesn't really kinda get in the plan at this step, it's gonna be, you're gonna kinda miss an opportunity in the future, to some degree, to be able to work on the overall design and layout and parameters of this, of a project. So the master development plan, when it comes in through the rezoning, is a crucial step for everybody to really dig in and, and look at and make sure you're thinking through what this is gonna look like in the end, both for staff and for you all and the BOC as well. Correct. So if someone, someone brings it to master development plan, planning commission, you all provide negative recommendation. So, yeah, I mean, they, they can move forward with it as is. And essentially, at that point in time, they are just saying, hey, we're gonna move forward. We wanna go to BOC as this is, as it is now. Maybe they feel confident, they, maybe they feel like they can get an approval of it. Maybe they're just like, you know what, we're, we're just gonna move forward no matter what, we just wanna see what happens. Obviously, the BOC can, can, they can recommend, or they can approve as is, they can deny. They can also require modifications of it as well. They can also send it back to you all for further discussion as well, if they wanna do that. They wanna, we get you all to come back, or maybe they say, we want you to go back and, and work with staff, and want you to go back and work with the planning commission to be able to look at this and maybe potential, here's some issues we're hearing from the public, here's some issues that we think are, are gonna occur on this site. So we want you to go back and look at it. So BOC can do that, you all can do that as well. They're not required to make any changes you all are recommending to them at that point in time. They can go move forward as, as they desire. Again, obviously, if it gets there and it gets turned down, then they, they don't have anything to show for their efforts at that point in time. Obviously, it's still, still an opportunity for you all to make your recommendations and, and make your basis why. And obviously, that's gonna go forward in the record to BOC, so they can understand why you all may be sending it forward as, hey, we, we recommend this, but here's some issues we think are occurring with this plan. It could be topography, it could be stormwater, it could be road system, road network. It could be intersections that are being created with 16, 16 roads that aren't adequate or up to, up to speed, whatever it may be. So those are, those are obviously recommendations that come in, so you all can send forward with your recommendation to BOC as well.
I think that's why it's important that, you know, Brandon and I sit on the, on the planning commission, because we can, in the board of commissioner meetings, we can explain what was discussed in the planning. If no, if neither one of us, you know, were on it, it'd be different. We, I would suggest that we all review the planning commission meeting that discussed that item. Right, but since we both sit on it, then, you know, we're able to explain to the other board members, you know, what was said, and by the, why the planning commission came to the. Or if it's a, you know, split vote or something, maybe explain a little more, you know, depth There's been a lot of straight zoning that's come to us.
Almost. The master plan that's associated with that coming action is a vesting document. So when the plan development is approved, if the plan development is approved, the rezoning is approved, then. That zoning, the controlling document for progressing that development is the master plan and the zoning that was associated with that master plan. In conventional zoning districts, you may have somebody submit, well, this is what we think you wanna do. If we're just wanting RS20 zoning physical facility, we got a concept plan, goes to this coming application. Approving that rezoning does not obligate that applicant to what they presented to you on standard zoning application. They have no vested right to proceed with what they showed in that conceptual plan. So any plan that's presented to you as part of a standard rezoning is just an informational only. There's no obligation on either side to do that. A plan, um, there is obligation, there's obligation. Applicant asked, he is obligated by items that are listed in that controlling document, that master plan, to proceed with his development based on all of those criteria that are attached to it. And the plan development is reviewed and approved by it. So there, there is, it's a very different scenario than we're talking about. The vested rights to progress the application development that the plan development.
As an example, this has already been voted on approved, so, you know, it's not something I'm bringing up. But MetaWood and Westway Apartments. So the people, when that was zoned, the people were shown this plan for the whole development. It was all gonna be condos and, you know, that's the way it was gonna be. So they bought into this, not knowing that later, because it didn't have, you know, the plan development with it, that now they've decided to do apartments. Whatever style apartments they are, you know, they did apartments, and now these people are upset. But, you know, they were given information that it was gonna be a certain way, but because of, it didn't have the overlay, they were able to change it to apartment. That's, it, it's important to, you know, make sure that we understand that if someone comes at us and they say, you know, we're gonna do R and 12, and, hey, we're gonna put, you know, condos all on here, and then they change their mind, and they do all apartments. They can do that if we don't have that. And I call it a pod, I can't wrap my head around pod, but anyway. If we don't have that as a part of it, then, you know, they change their mind. There's definitely nothing to it.
Where you typically see the most heartburn is a request to rezon commercial. And it's, the local property owner that's been around forever, and they're like, yeah, I just wanna do a little shop or something, or whatever it might be. And then they end up selling that property after the rezoning, which is perfectly fine. And then the new. Owner, when you rezon to a commercial zone, a standard commercial zone, you have to make sure that you're okay with every use by the right that's listed in that commercial zone. They have the legal right to develop that site, that commercial site, as long as that use is listed under that particular commercial site. That's where I've seen the most heartburn is. Somebody asks an applicant, hey, what are your plans to do with the rezoning commercial? Then nothing happens, right?
That's the reason we have steered away from the commercial zone. So that, you know, there isn't a list a mile long, and they sell it, and we thought it was gonna be this, and now it's a whatever. So we're more tight and stringent on our commercial zones that it, you know, it's just a few uses. One, and they have to say what that use is gonna be. Helps us, you know, to have more control as a city to, you know.
Right, okay. So one thing I'll add, Will talked about the vesting part, and I've had a few notes here on that one. So when you saw my vesting, I mean, when a, when a master development plan is approved, at that point in time, that person has, by state law, they are given three years to develop that under the regulations that were in place at the time it was approved. To start.
Any portion or phase.
Right, so they can start any portion or phase of that, they get three years. If in that three years, they get a final, as state law calls it, final development plan, approved for any phase of that particular development, they get additional two years, so that's five years. If they continue with all of their, they keep up with all of their permits, they keep up with everything they need to continue to construct that development, they can have vested rights up to 10 years for that development. Meaning they can develop that project upwards of 10 years based on the zoning regulations and city regulations that were in place at the time it was initially approved. Now, if they do phasing, there's potential it can be all the way up to 15 years of vested rights. So city could make a lot of different changes to regulations in that 15 years, but based on state law, they can still develop based on that original plan 15 years, potentially 15 years in the past. So that, to what Will was talking about, the vested rights, you know, that's, that's the key part of this master development plan. When this goes forward with the rezoning and the master development plan, once it's approved, they automatically have vested rights for three years for any part. And if they get any final plan approved as part of that, they get additional two years. That's a minimum. It has the potential for up to 10 years or 15 years, depending on if they phase it or not. So when I say, this is a very foundational part, this is a very crucial part of the process for you all to be digging in and looking at, and what's the development gonna look like? Because this is gonna set what this development will be, at least for three years, five years, 10 years, maybe 15, even 15 years, how this is gonna look. And there's gonna be, even if your zoning ordinance gets completely wiped out and rewritten, it doesn't matter. There's something to get to, they're gonna get to develop based under the regulations that were in place when it was approved. So it could be 10 years later, and they're still developing under, you know, the current zoning ordinance now. You could, you could wipe your zoning ordinance out next year, get a whole new zoning ordinance in place, and they would still get to develop under zoning ordinance that's currently in place right now. So that's the understanding of, the importance of understanding, your master development plan goes forward, they're locked in for at least three years and potentially up to 15. 15. Well, there are, so, there are specifications in state law that says, you know, within that three-year period, you do have to get a final approval. So once you do that, you can get another two, and if you're doing that, then you do have up to 10 years. Now, can a community be more restrictive than the state law? I guess potentially, but I'm not sure how that works. I don't know if there's been any case law on that or not. I mean, state law's saying you get three years and then you can get additional two, with just with any final approval. They can come in with phase one, 10 lots, and get a final approval for that, and they get another two years for vested rights. I would, I would think so. Yeah, I would think so. I don't think you can make it applicable to something prior to it actually being in place, yeah. Yeah, I would have to... Not sure when those were adopted, let me see. Excellent. I don't have it printed out. I don't remember exactly when the state law was updated for the new vested rights. It was fairly recent. Essentially, the reason they did it was because there were so many communities throughout the state who had so many different regulations for vested rights, and the state said, "Nope, we're going to do it at state level, that way everybody knows what the plan is." Instead of this community having one and them having two and this having three, and there was like, "No, we're just going to do it at a state level. Everybody has this." 2014, okay. Essentially, that's what happened, is there was a lot of communities, they were all over the place and, you know, very different throughout the state, so the state said, "You know what? We're just going to do this. We're just going to make this state level or make a state law, it's just going to, it's going to regulate it all to a certain standard." That's how we get the vested rights we have now. And like I said, it does specifically say maintains all, a person has to maintain all required permits, certifications, approved plans and things like that. So it's not as though, "Hey, I come in and get this master development plan, I'm good for three years," and, I mean, you're going to have to make sure you have all required permits, whether that be state, federal, local, whatever those permits are required. You're going to have to maintain all of it, get those and maintain all of them to maintain that vested rights, to be able to continue to move forward into that, to developing the first phase, second phase, the whole development, whatever it may be, so. So in that case, it wouldn't necessarily be your master development plan, it would be, if it's a base zone and they're doing a residential subdivision, they come in with a preliminary plat, then that's going to be their first approval. So their vested rights would start when they come in with a development plan, essentially their preliminary plat for development. That's their first plan to come forward, that's the first thing to get approved, and so base zoning, it would be, your development plan would be your first. That's where it would trigger vested rights. No, planning commission. That's not a BOC approval. We're saying master development plan simply because master development plan is tied with the rezoning, which requires BOC approval, but it would, in terms of just being a development plan, that stops with you all, and so whenever you make that, you all would make that approval on a development plan, then that would trigger vested rights for a particular development if it was just a base zone, street zone. Correct. That's correct. So state law, they have this, what was it called, preliminary development plan. That's like their general terminology for, what they mean by that is essentially the first, first plan that is approved, that I can't remember the term, it shows the concept of the development. It's very general wording, so it's seriously the first thing that gets approved for a development that shows the overall layout and general design or concept of a property, of a development. So it doesn't necessarily require it to be a master development plan like you all have or a development plan, they just use the general terminology of preliminary development plan. And then they do give some, they do give a definition of what that is, and it says, "Or other documents similar to," I think. They make it very broad as far as what's a preliminary development plan that would trigger vested rights at the state level.
I'd like to let everyone know that I've asked if this be video or audio. So it's going to be a couple of people. I wanted them to have access to it, so I don't know if that was mentioned, but I did want to mention that audio and videotape, so they can refer back to it if needed.
You mentioned the board zoning appeals, so that's not necessarily in this process, but we can, we can do that another time, or if we have time at the end, I can definitely touch on that as far as what they do. Quickly, their state law restricts them to three things, they have three things they get to review, and that's pretty much it. And so BCA would not have any step in this process in terms of master development plan pod or anything like that, unless it comes, falls under one of those three items, which, actually, we can probably touch on that at the end maybe, real quick, as far as what that might be. So we have the rezoning, we're going to presume this goes forward and, not like my slides like going forward. So again, just the rezoning a little bit, obviously, these are going to sound really repetitive at this point in time. Obviously, staff's going to review this, we're going to be looking at 2040 plan, is it in line with that, future land use categories, land uses permitted in that area, zoning district permitted under that classification. Obviously, you all know this is going to come to you all for recommendation, then go to VOC. So again, very similar to, exact same thing in terms of annexation, rezoning process is going to be the same in terms of getting to that final approval for a rezoning or a rezoning with master development plan. Either way, it's going to end up with the same process. So again, we're presuming that we have a planned overlay district, and so the next process in that, the next step in the process for that would be the submission of a development plan. It can be submitted for the entire development, it can just be specific to a phase, just the entirety of a particular phase. Doesn't have to be first phase, it could be phase seven or 10, whichever one they desire to go with first. It's going to be reviewed, it's going to be reviewed on standards that are in Article 10 and 17 of your zoning ordinance. You all as planning commission, you're going to approve, or review and approve the development plan under following requirements. You just have two, two specific requirements there that you can find in Section 10 of zoning ordinance. Again, we're, staff's going to be looking at the development plan, we're going to be ensuring that this matches the master development plan. Like we just talked about, this is establishing the development, the overall design of the development, all the regulations. So obviously, staff is going to be reviewing development plans to ensure that it matches that. We're going to make sure it's kind of generally applicable or generally in compliance, once it comes to you all, you all are going to be looking for that specific compliance, is it substantially compliant once it gets to you all? Staff's going to look at it and say, "Yes, it's generally compliant with what was approved for master development plan." It's going to come to you all, and you all are going to be looking to make sure it's substantially compliant with what was approved as part of the master development plan. This is where you're going to get in your situation of, have they made changes? They come in, have they made changes? Those changes, are they going to be what we consider a minor modification or a major modification? So again, this is the step where that's going to come in. You've got your master development plan, now the development plan's coming in, does it look the same? Does it match road layout, intersections, access points, lot layout, number of lots, lot sizes, open space percentages? We're going to make sure it matches that previous document. If not, that's going to be where the discussion has to start, is this a minor modification? Is it a minor, a major modification? And then what, what does that mean? If it's minor, it can be approved at planning commission and can be incorporated into the development at that point in time, and would not require update to the master development plan. If you all look at changes and say, "This is a major modification because..." And you go through that list that's in the zoning ordinance and you say, "It's a major modification because..." A, B, C, D, 1, 2, 3, then that's going to require an updated master development plan, and they're going to go back to step one, and they're going to go back through the PC, BOC process to have that new master development plan or that updated master development plan approved. You have, you have your, you have your standards that you can go by, there's not, it's not hard and fast on all of them, they're very general requirements, you can look at it and you make a determination, is that minor, is that major? So no, there's not hard and fast parameters in terms of this is absolutely a major and this is absolutely a minor. To be honest with you, most communities aren't hard and fast lot. There's some aspects of it that can be pretty hard and fast, some communities say, "Any increase in density." I don't mean, technically, if you add one lot, it's technically an increase in density. So then you still kind of get, you can seem like you're hard lot, "Hey, any increase in density, that's a major modification." Well, it's only one lot, I added one lot. I mean, it's technically an increase in density, but it really did affect the overall design of the project, did it really change the project in a major way? So if you, sometimes you can have a requirement that seems pretty cut and dry, but kind of have to dig into that a little bit and say, "Well, is this really..." Yeah. So the general idea behind that is, project comes in and it's approved for 250 houses and they make some modifications, and they come in and now we've reduced it to 250. You know, the idea is, well, the city was comfortable with 250, you've already approved it at this density, you've already approved it at this number of lots, so now we've come in, we've made modifications, and they may even look major, they may even be major, but all those modifications has now shrunk it down. So essentially, the city was comfortable with this level of development, now the development has decreased in this sort of way. Decreases are normally seen as minor, just because it's a decrease in density, decrease in intensity of traffic on and out, in and out of the site. Usually, if you have a decrease of development, you're going to have an increase in open space. Not always, but most of the time, those things go hand in hand, so normally, it would be seen as a minor, that doesn't mean it has to be, but most of the time, it's probably usually seen that way.
Have a list of 10 items that determine if it's minor or major.
Correct. It's zoning ordinance, and I think it's in Article, yeah, Section 10. I believe, I believe staff can approve those, but essentially, it's always going to be brought to you all for that determination of minor and major. Now, obviously, staff could come forward and say, "Hey, these are the changes, we feel these to be minor because they do not meet this threshold, this threshold, this threshold." And staff may make that recommendation to you all, say, "Hey, we feel like these are all minor changes because, you know, they added one lot." Or they changed this because they got on site and found wetlands and they can't build a road in that particular location because of wetlands that they found or discovered or something like that, and it's maybe changes that are dictated by something that's discovered after that initial master development plan that creates no control of, no control of the developer themselves, so. So I think staff could come forward and staff can make those recommendations, or they can give their perspective that we feel like this is minor, but still bring it to you all for that final approval.
Is that considered?
I don't remember if that's on their list or not, I mean, that goes to the designer review manual more than zoning ordinance. I don't know if there's anything on that list that actually deals with the architectural design. Does it? I couldn't remember if it is, on or not. There you go. So yes. And you all just haven't been a part of that discussion?
That's true.
Yeah. I mean, my, my general thought is, and my background has always been, you pretty much have a work session every month, no matter what, for just any general discussion topic. So that doesn't have to happen, that's not mandated by state law, you don't have to have a work session every month. That's just been my experience as far as being on staff at local governments. I would think anytime a staff got anything that came in in terms of modification, I would, I would kind of default to, "Hey, this needs to have a work session, just so everybody knows there's changes." Now, they may come in, you come to a work session, they may present it, you all may say, "Hmm, you know what, this is, this is really not, we don't, we don't really see this as a major." You can get some feedback in the very beginning of the process. I'm of the mindset that as soon as you see something that's changed, let's get it in front of you all so we can have discussion about that, for everybody's sake, for planning commission, for developer and for staff, so we can all understand and know that we're on the same, we're on the same, we're on the same track here, go in the same direction from the very beginning, that they know there's a change to it. Again, there's no requirement for that, but I feel like that's just the best default to have, just so that as early as in the process as you can get, there's going to be everybody in, everybody knows, and there can be some general discussion. It's almost like, you know, we said that the first step is that initial, initial meeting, you know, it's, I almost feel like it's that way, "Hey, wait a minute, there's a change, we need to have this almost initial meeting kind of thing." Everybody's on the same page, we know what's going on here, we know some changes that are coming, we know the changes that have been made. Now, the developer may go back from that, and the developer may say, "Hey, I'm going to not make these changes." They may make different changes, you know, you don't know, but at least everybody in the beginning has all the information upfront. Now, obviously, that's, you know, you all are part of that process to be able to have that work session, when do you have it, when do you schedule it, you know, staff being open to that as well, whenever it has to happen, but I'm always on default to say, "Let's have it as early as we can." Not to get you guys another meeting every month, but like I said, my experience has always just been, we're going to have one anyway, unless there's just nothing to discuss, then maybe it wouldn't happen, but it's kind of just that default, so everybody's up to date on really anything in the process or in the department, in the city. Again, the development plan, back to this, so we're going to, it's going to come to you all, again, staff's going to make a recommendation, you're going to have your staff report, you're going to have all of your information, and the approval of this is going to end with you all. Development plans do not require BOC approval. BOC is the legislative body of the city, and so their, their kind of responsibility in terms of development is really just going to be the annexation, the rezoning and master development plan. After that step, it's really going to end, it's going to end with you all and you all making your decision in terms of the development plan. And so the next thing after development plan, we're going to have construction plans, and so it is, it is possible for a developer to turn in their construction plans and their development plan at the same time. It is a possibility, it is a potential for them to do that, they're not required to do that, and if they don't turn them in at the same time, then at that point in time, they just turn them in at some point in time after the development plan's approved. I think the main difference between development plan and construction plan is, construction plans is really a very descriptive title, it is literally the plants in which it will be constructed by. And so when you think of development plan and then you think of construction plans, construction plans are going to be all of your engineering information, your grading, all of your pipe sizes, all of your information, all of your utility information, everything of that nature. So essentially, I mean, it is what is constructed by, so that's the idea in terms of another level of detail, greater level of detail. These are going to, these are going to come to staff, and these, construction plans do not come to you all for review or approval. The city engineer has authority to approve the construction plans. Once they have had a discussion, comments have gone back and forth, everything is up to a standard that is required by city engineer, by city requirements, city engineer will then stamp those and sign off saying this, these construction plans are approved and ready to be used for the development. At that point in time, city engineer would draft up a development agreement and also an estimate of the performance bond for the project as well. Would come to you all in BOC just for approval in form, but not to execute those agreements. So again, construction plans would not come to you all or the BOC for approval, the approval would, approval authority sets with the city engineer in terms of construction plans. I'm sure we're not running right up on time here.
We're talking specifically about...
Correct. And one other thing about the construction plans, understand too, you know, another thing that staff will be doing, specifically city engineer during this time, you know, they'll be verifying that all like third-party permitting is completed during this time, anything that's required from TDEC, TDOT, any outside agency that is required and that is requiring a permit for this development, staff will also be verifying that those are in hand during the construction. Staff will also be verifying that those are, uh, in hand, uh, during the construction plan process as well. So that's something that you all wouldn't see, but staff is doing, say, quote unquote, behind the scenes, verifying that those requirements were met. It's in the subdivision regulations before they are going to approve the construction plans. So once, once we have everything in terms of our master development plan and then our development plan and then our construction plans approved, now we're going to get to the point of the actual final plat coming forward. This is the next step that you all be, uh, have a development in front of, or a project in front of you for review and approval. So again, we mentioned, you know, one of those five documents we mentioned earlier, subdivision regulations that obviously set standards in the processes for subdivision of property. So, uh, any final plat that comes before you, we're going to, we're going to ensure that those, uh, meet those requirements and processes that are established in the subdivision regulations. Again, this could be for the entire development. It could be for a specific phase within that development. And are we going to go back to section ten? That's where the standards are in place or established for. You all planning commission having the authority to review and approve, uh, subdivision plats, final plat, uh, for development. So again, we're, we're going to be, staff's going to be looking at these. We're going to be reviewing them, make sure they match. Essentially, we're looking for, uh, compliance all the way back to master development plan, development plan, construction plans. We're making sure all of this is, uh, compliant throughout and consistent throughout. And, uh, that's the key part that we're going to be doing. And then bringing that forward to you all. And again, you all would have the final decision on the final plat approving it. And then again, B O C does not have any role in, uh, considering we're approving a plat at this point in time. So post approval, uh, and with Will and, and everybody in the back, they may, they'll be able to provide some more information to this. I don't want to get too deep into this, but just for you all to understand, um, you know, we, we can get to the, into the process in terms of the actual subdivision, residential subdivision. A final plat can be approved. It can be ready to be recorded. And you all, at that point in time, your, your role in terms of approving, reviewing and approving those documents are really complete at that point in time. However, after that, there's a lot of other things that go on, uh, that you all may not see, but that's going on by staff and that's going to include, include, um, reviewing, approving and, and issuing, uh, your grading permit, land disturbance permits, calculating bond amounts that you all, you all do hear about that at the meetings, uh, but ensuring those bonds are in place. Staff's going to be ensuring all of those. Uh, once the development's completed, they're going to be requiring, making sure as-built plans are submitted to the city, which is a requirement within your subdivision regulations. Get into, obviously going to get into the building permit process, but specifically on site inspections for individual lots. Also site inspections where they're all of development, looking at erosion control measures being in place. And then eventually you're going to get to acceptance of dedication of public infrastructure. So your roads, utilities, anything of that nature. Again, I, I don't want to get too deep into all of this. I know we have staff back there. If you have questions, they can probably help you a little bit more on this. But just kind of give you all an idea that, you know, once the final plat's approved, there's really not going to be any more plans that come forward. But there is a lot of other things that will occur, uh, after that approve, that final approval, that final plat. Uh, and these are all going to be handled by staff. Construction continues forward and moves forward on that particular development. And I will, I will end it there. I want to make sure we weren't too pushed up against planning commission meeting time. Glad to try to answer any questions or anything else. Again, I, I know you said it was when you recorded both audio and video. I did send a PDF to Ethan earlier, so there should be a PDF of it. If you all would like to just have a PDF of the, of the presentation as well. No, I'm sorry. I'll send him anyway. I found some misspelled words and such. So I'll send him another one tomorrow morning, but, um, but he'll have that. If you all would just like to have a PDF of it as well on top of the recording, the video and audio recording. Real quick, in terms of the board zoning appeals, um, so state law, uh, is very specific on what they can review and what they have purview over. And they can look at variances, uh, special exceptions or conditional uses, uh, whatever the terminology is used, and then also administrative appeals. So those are the three project types that a board zoning appeals can review. Anything outside of that, they have no authority to review. So they can't look at a site plan. They can't look at a plat. Uh, they can't do anything of that nature or give any type of, uh, approval for anything outside of someone coming and requesting a variance from, uh, zoning requirement and zoning ordinance or, uh, conditional use, special exception, which is essentially, um, I have a property that's owned a certain way and there are certain uses that may be appropriate in that location. And a person would have to come forward and say, I'm meeting all these requirements that would make this use appropriate on this particular property. And then board zoning appeals could approve that particular land use, uh, or a particular piece of property. So as Will mentioned earlier, you know, you have every property and has every, has so many rights that are just by right, by law. If I have a property zoned a certain way, by right, I can do any of those uses. And then you're going to have certain uses that are conditional or special exception. And if I meet certain conditions, then I could, I can do one of these uses there. So the board zoning appeals is going to have authority to, uh, review and approve those particular uses. Or they can review and approve variances for a particular zoning requirement within zoning ordinance. Or anybody, if they disagree with, we'll say Ethan interprets the zoning ordinance in a particular way and someone disagrees with that, then they can appeal that to the board zoning appeals. Have their opportunity to prove that Ethan was incorrect in his interpretation and they believe it to be interpreted a different way. Essentially what they can do in terms, they, they kind of become a quad judicial board at that point in time, saying, hearing, essentially hearing arguments from city staff that says, well, this is the way you've interpreted it. Um, and then whoever is, feels aggrieved, they can come in and say, no, they did it incorrectly. We feel it should be interpreted this way. And then board zoning appeals will set and essentially as a judge almost, and they'll make a determination on who interpretation or decision that that was made. But that, that's the three things that, uh, B C A can do and that's all they can do. So state law is very specific on what they can and can't do. If you have a planning commission, you're required to have a B C A because you have to have that essentially safety valve for situations that might come up. Because your zoning ordinance doesn't, is not going to fit perfectly on every property. Obviously, properties were developed and subdivided many years before zoning was in place in most communities. So you're going to have properties that are shaped like pizza slices and they're going to be, have sinkholes and have really severe topography. And people are just not going to be able to meet your zoning requirements. And so a variance in the board zoning appeals is a process to relieve some of that. Or it can be a situation, uh, you know, I dealt with a project in a former community I worked for, uh, where T dot widened the road and they literally took half the guy's property. I mean, no buy, no, no act of his own. T dot said, we're riding it. So we're taking half your property. And he just wanted to rebuild his house back and he just couldn't meet all the setbacks. And so, um, he was given a variance to build a, build, build a house back. So it can be a situation like that as well, where an outside agency has created some type of hardship on a property that someone can come to B C A and get a relief there through the variance.
A lot of times you'll see hardships like with pools, five yard setbacks, stuff like that because of.
So you cannot give a variance for a land use. So board zoning appeals cannot say, oh, well, this land use is not permitted here, but we'll let you do this land use on that property. They're not permitted to do that. Board zoning appeals is restricted from doing a lane, uh, particular land use variance. You can't do that. Um, courts have specifically said that is them stepping into the legislative role of the community, which they obviously are not a legislative body. So they cannot do any type of use variance. They can't just say, oh yeah, you can do that use there. Even if it's not permitted there, they can't just say, oh yeah, I can do that. There are specific ones that they may be able to do that they can approve. But if it's just not listed, they can't, they can't just say, oh yeah, you can do that use. So that, that's one thing I would bring up for sure. That's a big thing that you might be surprised how many communities let that happen. But that's really the big difference there in the variance. You can't use the use variance, but you do have special exception uses that they can approve. Similar, but not exactly the same. Any other questions or anything like? Yeah, you're welcome. Hopefully it was someone informative. I know y'all see this every month, so it may have been a little repetitive and boring at times. So I was trying to just. Hey, if that's what we can do, clear it up and that's, that's, that's excellent as well. Be able to clear up everything. Yeah. Correct. If you all have any topics, other topics you'd like to know about, we'll be glad to, we'll be glad to do that as well. So. Uh, this is, I mean, I have a whole presentation on B C A. I mean, if, if that's something you all really want to hear about, I mean, I have a whole presentation on B C A and what they can. Yeah, I'll say, I can send that to you. Yep. State law always requires them all.